Okay, um, let's see, uh, let's go ahead and get Kathleen, we have a roll call.
Commissioner Blanco.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Seifert.
Here.
Commissioner Lopez.
Here.
Chair Dickerson.
Here. Um, prior to moving forward with the agenda, please note the following. All written comments should have been submitted to the city staff, uh, city planning staff by email by 3:00 PM this afternoon. If you wish to comment on an agenda item, please use the raised hand icon on the Zoom platform. Once you are recognized, you will then be unmuted and allowed to comment on business at hand in the order received. Maximum, uh, comment time will be three minutes or as otherwise directed by the chair. If you're calling in and wish to be acknowledged, please raise your hand by dialing star nine and identify yourself when unmuted. Um, with those things being said, uh, we move on to the approval of the minutes for the March seventeenth Planning Commission session. Has everyone had a chance to read them? And are there any, um, changes or comments or, um, do someone want to make a motion?
I move that we approve the March seventeen twenty twenty-one minutes.
Do you have a second?
A second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Uh, public comment period. Um, the, before I get into public comment period, the following is the online procedure for the agenda. I will introduce the agenda item and turn it over to staff for a presentation. Once staff's presentation is completed, I will open the agenda item to the commissioners to ask key questions of the staff, first asking the commissioners of any disclosure or communication between themselves and applicants. After all questions by the commissioners are answered, I will open up the agenda item to the applicant who will be on as an attendee. Um, and at that time, the applicant should raise their hand, um, and will unmute you to make any comments on your item. After the applicant's presentation, I will then ask if any commissioners have any questions of the applicant. Once the commission has asked questions of the applicant, I will then open the item up to the public for general comments. Uh, once again, for the public in attendance, please wait to raise your hand until after I have called for public comment on the item and the host will unmute you in the order received. Please remember, if you are dialing in, use the star nine key to raise your hand and you will have up to three minutes or as otherwise directed by myself, the chair. After public comment, I will bring the item to the commissioners for any additional comments or questions to the applicant or the staff. So we start off with the public comment period, uh, initial public comment period. Each member of the audience may interest the commission on any subject within the commission's business. Each member of the audience in each subject is limited to discussion of three minutes or as otherwise directed by the chair. These are for items that are not already agendized on the, uh, on, for, for this meeting. So if there is something else that any of the attendees want to discuss besides what's already agendized, then you may raise your hand and do so. I'll wait to see if there's anybody who wants to do that. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar is approved with one motion. These items are read only on request of commission members. Should anyone, including members of the public, wish to discuss or disapprove any item, it must be dropped from the blanket motion and considered as a separate item. Uh, does anybody wish to, um, to take this off of the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none and seeing no attendees, uh, do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Do you have a second?
Take a second.
Okay, Mr. Commissioner Seifert seconds, and, uh, all those in favor?
I think we need a roll, I think we need a roll call.
Oh, is that a roll call item? All right, then that's fine, uh, then Kathleen, do so.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Aye.
Commissioner Seifert.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco.
Aye.
Chair Dickerson.
Aye. But we will move on to the, uh, public hearings and which the first, the first agenda for the public hearings is the Bay Avenue tentative parcel map at twelve-thirty East Donovan Road, moved from staff.
Okay, uh, thank you, Commissioner Dickerson. I'm Cody Graybell, Associate Planner with the City of Santa Maria. Tonight I'll be presenting the TR twenty-twenty dash zero-zero-zero-three Bay Avenue Residential Tentative Parcel Map at twelve-thirty East Donovan Road. This would create two parcels on an existing residential lot. And this item was introduced to the subdivision committee at the February eleventh meeting and was recommended for approval as conditioned. The applicant and owner are both in attendance and they will be available for questions at the end of the meeting and my presentation. The project site, it's located in the northeast quadrant of the city. It's between East Donovan Road and East Harding Avenue to the north and south, and North Sway Road and Highway one oh one to the east and west. It's located in an existing single-family residential neighborhood and the site is zero-point-six-three acres in size. It's been built out with an existing single-family residence, pool and poolhouse, as well as a couple garages. It is three frontages, one is along East Donovan Road, North Bay Avenue, and East Harding Avenue. An access into the site currently is from East Harding Avenue. So this is a photo of the project site looking southeast from Donovan and Bay. And there are boundary walls that have been constructed at the back of the sidewalk that currently are in the city's right-of-way that, um, I will be discussing in more detail in upcoming slides. So this is a perspective looking northeast from the corner of Harding and Bay. And, um, as we can see here, there's additional boundary walls that also have been built in the city's right-of-way. The project site is zone, single-family residential or R-one, and it's surrounded by R-one zoning. And the parcels in the immediate vicinity of the site meet the standard lot size and lot width of six thousand square feet and sixty feet wide respectively. So the map would create two lots, parcel one would be, um, at the northern point at the top of the existing parcel. So I would like to mention north is actually, um, to the right here. And then, um, parcel one would end up being zero-point-two-three acres in size. And parcel two would be point-four-zero acres in size. And, um, there would be an access easement that would be recorded over parcel two, um, in order for vehicles to be able to reach, um, parcel one and park in the existing garage. And there actually would be a portion of the pool room, which is in this brown shaded area, that would have to be demoed in order to avoid having, um, the structure overlap two different property lines. And, um, city staff actually is currently processing a building permit for that work. And staff does anticipate in the future that a building permit would be submitted to build another single-family home on parcel two. Um, that would be reviewed, um, at staff level and, you know, we would check all the R-one standards, um, for conformity at that time. And there would be no new driveways proposed, um, from this parcel map. Access would just be remaining from Harding Avenue. So there's one project-specific condition I just want to, um, briefly discuss in more detail. So this is number eight, it's on page four of the permit. And this is addressing the walls in the right-of-way that we were looking at in prior slides. So staff worked closely with the Public Works Department and we determined that these walls are built completely in the city's right-of-way and that they cannot remain any longer. And, um, the primary concern here is for safety. We just want to ensure that the right-of-way is going to, um, be safe for pedestrians and vehicles and the current configuration with the walls in the right-of-way, um, is presenting some safety concerns. So I just wanted to clarify the timing a little bit. Um, so the red arrows that are shown on the slide and then the, the triangle at the corner of Bay Avenue and Harding all have to come down prior to the map being recorded. And then the blue arrows, which are shown adjacent to parcel two, would need to come down prior to occupancy of the future home that's built on parcel two. And, um, staff did review, um, the project site and we did determine that there is significant space for new walls or fences to be constructed outside of the city's right-of-way. So wrapping up here, staff recommends that the Planning Commission by resolution conditionally approve tentative parcel map TR twenty-twenty twenty, excuse me, twenty-twenty dash zero-zero-zero-three. And this concludes my presentation, thank you.
Thank you very much, Cody. Um, before we, um, ask commissioners about, uh, any questions they might have for staff, I'd like to ask if any of the commissioners have had any, uh, communication, um, with the, uh, with the applicants.
Chair, I'm obviously on the subdivision committee, so I've seen this, but I had no communication.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Seifert. Any others? No, okay, then I will open it up to questions of staff, uh, by the commission. See, we would like to ask any questions initially. Okay, seeing none.
Chair Dickerson, Commissioner Lopez does have his hand raised.
Oh, I, I apologize, I'm once again getting reused to Zoom, so it's up in that upper left. Um, Commissioner Lopez, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, I, I was looking at, at the, uh, at the parcel map and I, I noticed in Cody's presentation that, uh, access is doing easement. Why couldn't it have been off of Bay Avenue?
Chair Lopez, uh, so I believe this was a personal preference from the, the applicant. Um, this was the design that, that they proposed.
So, so there was no restriction if they wanted to put a driveway off of Bay Avenue into the, into the either parcel?
Uh, yeah, that's correct, there was no restriction.
And then, and then lastly, is, is it correct that the second parcel is one hundred forty-one point four-one, uh, feet in length?
Um, yes, let me check my notes, but I believe that is correct. Uh, yes, that is correct.
Oh, I mean, they could have done three lots here, I mean, if, if that was the design.
Um, yes, there, there was room where they, the max would have been three.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Lopez. Um, other questions, Commissioner Blau?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Chair. Uh, so regarding the walls, the, there's discussion about the removal of walls. Is there any requirement for construction of new walls? Is there any, or is that going to be, um, put forward at a later time during a building phase? Or is there any, any discussion now about all the requirements?
Uh, I'm going to let, um, Mr. Bayes respond to that. Commissioner Blanco?
Commissioner, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Blanco, it, your question was, was, is there, is there a proposal to, is there a proposal to, to, um, replace the walls?
Yeah, is there anything, David, now that, uh, has been discussed or any proposal to reconstruct the walls at a later, is that at a later date or is there any discussion now? I'm just curious, but the wall's coming down, what's the requirement going to be for new walls?
The, the likelihood that, that the, the conditions of approval will require the walls to be removed and it's likely that, that upon development of the, say, um, of lot two, the likelihood of, of a, a boundary wall, a boundary fence, so to speak, will be established. Uh, as well as when the wall on lot one is removed, the, um, a boundary fence will be, excuse me, a boundary fence will be installed, will likely be installed on the property.
So any requirements would, would happen during, uh, building phase?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I, I actually have one more question if I can ask that. Was there, did, was there any, um, review by fire? I, I didn't see any conditions regarding fire access to both parcels from that existing driveway. Um, so I just, you know, out of curiosity if, if this was reviewed by fire, if there's any concerns at this point. Um, you know, I didn't see anything, I was curious.
Yeah, Chair Blanco, I can answer that question. So city staff does route these applications to the fire department. Um, and they did take a look at the proposal and they, they had no specific conditions for this proposal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Blanco. Further questions by commissioners? No, all right, then, uh, why don't we go ahead and open up the applicant to, um, the applicant has a presentation.
Hi, good evening, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right, I had a little, uh, note that said my internet was unstable, so I hope it stays stable for this. Um, uh, my name is Ginger Anderson and I'm the agent for the owners, Weeden and Adriana Coopley, who are also on the line if we have any questions for them. Um, I wanted to thank Cody and Dana and Chen and, uh, um, David Bayes for helping us with these conditions. We've, we've gone through them a number of times, a lot of effort has come into, to what you see before you. Um, including, thank you, Tim, for your feedback during the SDRC as well. Um, the proposal is for a two-lot subdivision and yes, a previous life of this same project was for three lots and the owners decided to only go for two. So, uh, at three lots, they would have been consistent with the neighborhood sizing of lots. At two, they're, they're going to be a little, uh, plush still. Um, so, uh, some of the questions, um, ESOW, I, I, um, ESOW used to work at Penfield and Smith, which is what Stan Tech used to be as a, as an engineer. So ESOW, hello, and I totally, it's funny, I know exactly where your comment is coming from about that driveway. Uh, fire department and emergency access to, uh, the north parcel, they would just respond from Bay or Donovan. Uh, the driveway length from Harding is not, uh, of concern here. However, there is plenty of space on the southern lot. If the fire department did want them to add a couple feet to that driveway, they could. Um, the reason why we're proposing the access to stay up Harding is because we didn't want to introduce a lot of, I'll call it hubbub, to the neighborhood by adding another driveway on Bay. Uh, Bay is a collector's street. Um, and there are driveways in, out to Bay, but, um, it's sort of not an ideal place to have turning movements that close to Donovan. So that was a, a choice that we made, uh, to, to keep, keep the, uh, current circulation around that part of the neighborhood the way it is. Um, in terms of, uh, future walls, um, yeah, we understand the timing as, as conditioned. Um, David Bayes and Kevin and Cody worked really hard with us on the timing for the wall removal. Um, and we had initially intended to, uh, request the timing for removal of the wall on lot one to be adjusted. Um, however, decided to, uh, just accept the conditions the way they are. Um, future, uh, fences around lot one would just need to be outside of the right-of-way. Um, as Cody said, there seems, appears to be enough space to move a new fence and put that out of the right-of-way. Uh, so that's, uh, we understand that the timing on the, the corner has a sight distance issue and we appreciate the, the timing of the removal of the wall on the southern lot, lot two, because that wall in the meantime will serve as good noise and, uh, and stormwater kind of, I think, they're going to construct a house on that lot. So keeping that wall there really actually helps, um, mitigate any impacts to the neighborhood while they build that new house. So, um, we're, we're supportive of the conditions the way they're written and, and again, thank staff for all their hard work. Um, we think this project is, uh, a no-brainer in terms of compatibility with the neighborhood and all that. So we hope that you find that that is also, uh, we hope that's your opinion as well. Um, we're here if you have any questions about, um, any of the project. Uh, but otherwise, we're, we're looking forward to getting forward with the recordation and building a new house.
Thank you very much, Ms. Anderson. Is there any, uh, questions for the applicant at this time by commissioners? Oh, Commissioner Seifert.
Ginger, wasn't there an issue with cars careening into the house and that's why they built the block, the block wall? And I thought there was talk about rebuilding the block wall on the corner of, uh, Donovan and Bay for that very reason.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, a car did come off of Donovan and land in their living room. Um, so it has, uh, served a, a security purpose for them. Um, you know, ideally, we wouldn't have to remove the block wall, um, at this time. But, uh, you know, I think staff's been working really closely with us. If it was the, um, if it was the, the choosing of the Planning Commission to, to give us more time to remove that wall around lot one, we could certainly take it. Um, you know, but, uh, yes, that, that wall has served a, a very good and important purpose and, and, uh, given their druthers, they would, they would like to keep it there for a while longer than what the commission reads it this time.
Are they going to rebuild it out of the right-of-way, I forget?
Uh, yeah, at this time, the discussion is to build a new fence, um, out of the right-of-way.
A new fence or a wall?
Um, that, I, I don't know if they've determined, um, if the wall is acceptable. I, I don't know, that decision yet, yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions from commissioners? No, what, what, then I, I do have a question. Uh, Ginger, what, uh, if, if we were, if we were on mine to allow, uh, the wall to stay up a little while longer for, as Commissioner Seifert pointed out, uh, for some safety issues regarding, um, you know, potential vehicle intrusion, um, what type of timeframe, what type of timeframe would, would you be, um, would, would you be interested in? I mean, other than the most possible.
Yeah, yeah, forever, um, no.
Does forever work for us, forever works for you, right?
Well, I know that doesn't work for you guys. Um, I know that's not, not what Public Works wants as well. Um, so we had, uh, originally thought that the timing for removal of the wall around lot one might be better aligned to be consistent with the timing for removal of the wall around lot two, which was, uh, prior to occupancy of lot two. Um, so, uh, if there are revised condition were considered, it would be something like, um, changing, um, condition eight C to have timing more like eight E.
I see. Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Um, okay, any, uh, any last questions for the applicant before, before I move along to, um, looks like.
Chair Dickerson, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. Um, Heather Widdum, uh, would like to just say a couple of things.
Sure, Heather, go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, this is Heather Widdum, Assistant City Attorney. I just want to chime in a little because I hear there's some discussion about, um, possibly considering amending the timing on the wall. And I just want to make sure that the commission is aware that the Public Works Director feels very strongly about the condition as written and does not support the revised language which he has seen. Um, the walls right now are illegally encroaching in city right-of-way and it's really not within the commission's discretion to, to allow that illegal encroachment to continue. And for safety reasons, uh, as we're discussed with the line of sight, uh, staff feels very strongly about the timing because the timing gives the city leverage to ensure that the walls come down timely. And if that leverage is given up, it could be harder to enforce later down the line.
Heather, can I, can I ask you, what, um, what were the circumstances of the walls going up initially and how long have they been there?
You know, I don't know, I'll defer to staff how they initially got up, but they are currently, uh, encroaching in the city's right-of-way. Um, I see Cody's got his light on, I'll, I'll let him see if he can answer your question.
Cody?
Sure, uh, Chair Dickerson, so your question regarding about how the walls, um, were established. When I researched the site history, it appeared that the property was built out in the nineteen-sixties and I was unable to locate any permits for the walls. Um, so the city may have had no oversight, um, to the construction. They may have inadvertently been built in the right-of-way. Um, but no permits have been issued by the city in the past for the walls.
And, and I assume that a permit, when the wall went up, I assume a permit would have been needed for the wall at that time?
Yeah, I would, I would assume so, given that portions of the wall are over eight feet tall. Um, and typically, yeah, walls over six feet require permits.
Got it.
I have a question. Could it have been that at the, could it have been that at the time that the walls were built, we didn't have that code in place and therefore they may be exempt?
Yeah, that's a little tricky to answer, Commissioner Hernandez. Um, I mean, I think generally the fact that they were built in the right-of-way, um, creates concerns because, you know, the city would not permit any structures or walls within that space. Um, so regardless of if a permit was needed or not for that scope of work, um, we would have never issued a permit in the right-of-way.
Right, so I think my que, you said that they were built what year?
Well, so, um, when I did some base, baseline research, I determined the home was built in the nineteen-sixties. Um, but I did not locate a permit for the walls themselves.
Yeah, and my question was maybe at the time or, you know, the ordinance that it exists that, that limited the walls to eight feet. I, I'm just trying to figure out why the city would have allowed.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's possible or the city may have just, you know, never been brought into the loop. Um, the walls could have been constructed without a permit.
Okay.
And, and, and could, uh, first of all, Commissioner Lopez, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Cody, just to kind of, um, looking at the, the wall that's up, passed, uh, in the right-of-way. If, if you're looking at, at the property line, how, how do the setbacks then work? Because, uh, are the, are the yards shifting? The front yard is on Bay Avenue and the side yard is now on Donovan and the other side yard is, uh, at the property boundary? Is that, is that, is that how that's working now, the setbacks?
Uh, let's see, uh, Chair Lopez, so I may need you to clarify. So this is for, um, if we're looking at.
First of all, parcel one.
Yeah, for parcel one, okay.
So the, the right-of-way, uh, I'm seeing that, the CME wall and it looks like the property line is about six feet south of that, of that wall. So that would mean that that, uh, front door where that front block is, is a lot closer than the twenty-foot setback required currently. If I'm looking at the parcel map.
Yeah. Right, so I believe that, um, some of the construction is non-conforming to the R-one standards. So the, the new configuration, for example, um, the frontage of parcel one, um, would be on Bay Avenue and it would require a twenty-foot setback from the front property line. Um, and that front property line is located ten feet from the back of the curb. So portions of the construction, um, would be non-conforming to that setback.
Sorry, okay, sorry. Um, okay, so, so Donovan's still considered the front yard?
Um, well, technically, Bay Avenue is the front yard. The way, the way the city defines a frontage is, um, the narrower width. So even though, um, some of the doors may face East Donovan and that would appear to be the frontage, the way that our municipal code defines a frontage, it, it would technically be on Bay Avenue. So Bay would be the front for parcel one and East Donovan would be the, the street side of the corner.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you, Commissioner Lopez. Um, any further questions of, of staff or of, um, by the commission for, um, for the applicant? I see, uh, I see Ms. Anderson's, uh, hand up. Will you go ahead and hear from her again?
Yeah, I was just, um, inferring with my client. Um, the house was built in nineteen forty-eight and they bought it from the original owner, builder, in two thousand and ten and the wall already existed as of that time. Um, and the original owner was the owner farmer who then subdivided all the land around it. kind of tacked on as a 19-foot width. And I unfortunately did not necessarily think that the conversation was going to go this way, but I would be interested at some point to figure out when that 19 feet was dedicated. So I don't know how relevant it is to keep going down this path. If there was an opportunity to find out that the wall was legal non-conforming, I think that's what Commissioner Hernandez was trying to get after. So I don't know where we go from here on that, but I think, I thought I would add that to the conversation. So I don't know, maybe the condition is something like provide evidence that it's legal non-conforming, or remove it. I don't know what that is, what that would be. But I think at minimum, we have to take out the corner for the sight distance issue. So, sorry to throw that in there, but I think that was worth.
Heather, would that be, would that be reasonable to give them time to find out if it's legal non-conforming, or if it just has to come down?
If we wanted to continue the hearing, to allow them to do whatever research they want to and to work with staff, we could do that. I wouldn't be comfortable amending the condition tonight. To my understanding, that there's a right-of-way that's indicated on a map somewhere, and the right-of-way, that wall is in the right-of-way, so I, it seems pretty clear to me that it shouldn't be there. But maybe I'm missing something.
Yeah, maybe I can clarify with one other piece of information. So, you know, there's three frontages at this project location. There's East Donovan Road, there's North Bay Avenue, and then there's East Harding Avenue. So for the various property lines, I can provide that information and then clarify the location of the walls, and hopefully that can help just give a better picture for the encroachment in the right-of-way. So at East Donovan Road, the front property line is 12 feet from the back of the curb, and the wall that was constructed is only six feet from the back of the curb. So it's entirely in the city's right-of-way. No portion of it is on the parcel. And then at Bay Avenue, the property line is 10 feet from the back of the curb, and the wall, again, is located six feet from the curb. So again, the entirety of the wall is in the right-of-way. None of it's, you know, on the parcel, and then?
Cody, can I ask you real quick, fast, when, and this goes to what Commissioner Hernandez said, when was it, when was the ordinance established that would have, would have, you know, eaten up that much right-of-way? You know, when did it go from there is no right-of-way to all of a sudden there's 12 feet of right-of-way?
Well, so the information I'm referencing was from a map that was recorded. The city references survey data. Parts of the city were surveyed in the 1960s, and that's what I'm referencing today. So when the maps are recorded, right-of-way is dedicated, you know, parcel lines are drawn out, and that's the information I'm referencing today.
Okay. Go ahead, continue.
Okay, well, yeah, and then it's, along East Harding Avenue, the property line is 10 feet from the back of the curb, and the wall is, again, it's only six feet from the back of the curb. So, you know, it might sound like a broken record here, but at all of the frontages, the walls are entirely in the right-of-way, and none of them are located on the parcel.
So the staff's position, it's pretty egregious. Whenever it was built, it was built way out of, way out.
Right, and it may have been inadvertent, but yeah, that's, just trying to help clarify.
Commissioner Seifer?
Thank you, Chair. They basically just followed the sidewalk. So they went right up to the sidewalk and built the wall. So that, I mean, the farmer, you know, he sees a sidewalk and builds a wall. I mean, that's probably how it happened. I have no idea, but that's why it's where it is, is because that is the end of the sidewalk.
I see, I see. Thank you very much, appreciate that. Once again, any other, any further questions of the applicant by commissioners? Okay, let's move on to public comment. Has Kathleen or Dana, have there been any communications?
I've received none.
No, okay. Then let's open it up to the public and see if there's any questions or comments by the public on this agenda. I'll give the public a few seconds to raise their hands. Once again, if you're on a phone, star nine, and otherwise, use the Zoom raise hand feature. And, okay, I see none, so let's go ahead and, does the applicant have anything else they wish to comment on before I close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission?
No, just, we're ready to accept the commission as written.
Okay, great, I appreciate that, thank you. Okay, then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for any comments and/or resolution, motion for resolutions. Commissioner Seifer?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, it's unfortunate the placement of the wall. We will look at it at subdivision community, but what Public Works is concerned with is there's a line of sight, and it is very important to maintain that line of sight. That's where you get blindsided, and that's, and the applicant was aware of that, and it's an unfortunate thing, but the wall is unfortunately in the wrong place. And my thing is, is we just had an accident on a property on the south of town where a car careened right into our building. So now we have large landscape rocks. So something really does need to go there to protect their home, but I'm sure they're aware of that. And that's my only comment.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Seifer. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I think it's a good project. We need more housing, and if this can provide a residential lot that can be developed, well, that's always good for the housing inventory. Additionally, it looks like the property line on the east is, or the fence that's on the east is a little bit over the property line as well. It looks like it. In any event, I think it's a good project, that they're looking at keeping the conditions as they were, I'm looking at it too. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Hernandez?
I think it's a good project. As I reviewed the project, I thought it was really a no-brainer. The applicant agreed to all the conditions. I am like Commissioner Seifer concerned as to a barrier there for cars, so I'm sure the applicant will think of something to protect the property. But that would be the only thing that, you know, I would add to that. But I think it's a good project.
Thank you, Commissioner Hernandez. Commissioner Blanco, anything?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Ginger, hi, it's been a long time. I recognize your name, and I, right away, remember you, so, but very, very good presentation. You know, I think the discussion on the walls is obviously, this is just a safety issue, and so it makes a lot of sense, and a liability issue, so I can understand that. I think it's been discussed and back and forth quite a bit, so it's good to hear that the applicant's willing to comply with that. Other than that, no, I think it's a great idea. I think all the commissioners mentioned already, you know, the need for housing, like everywhere else, so I think this is a good opportunity, and it looks like a good little project. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Blanco. I agree with the other commissioners. I think it's a good project. I agree with Commissioner Lopez. It's nice to see the additional housing stock put out there through the subdivision. As Commissioner Seifer said, it's unfortunate with the wall, but really, the safety issue for Commissioner Hernandez is really probably paramount. And so I also appreciate the applicant being open to and being so willing to go with the conditions. I think they probably are necessary. So with that being said, I can entertain a resolution, a motion for resolution, if somebody wants to get one. Unmute, Maribel.
I move that we approve by resolution the tentative parcel map TR 2020-0003.
Do I hear a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Second from Commissioner Lopez, and can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Commissioner Seifer?
Aye.
Chair Dickerson?
Aye. Thank you very much, and good luck with your project. We'll now move on to other business, forward course from planning commissioners and or staff. We hear, why don't we hear from the staff first?
Thank you, Chair Dickerson and commissioners. This is Dana Eady, and so I was just going to go ahead and give you an update on our upcoming hearing schedules. We do have a study session that's scheduled for tomorrow at 1:30 PM, and we have a conditional use permit for a mixed-use project that's scheduled to be discussed tomorrow. And then at this point, our next hearing date is looking like it's going to be June 2nd. We don't have any items yet for May 19th, so I'd like to go ahead and cancel that hearing date.
Okay.
But it does look like we're going to have a study session May 20th, and then a hearing June 2nd. So those are the next kind of upcoming hearings and study sessions that we have. And that's the update that I have today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Anything from commissioners? Anybody would like to discuss anything at all? We'll start with Commissioner Seifer.
Thank you, Chair. Dana, how is the application for the renovations at the U-Haul? There's nothing happening on that facade, no anything, no anything. How are we doing?
Yeah, they are going to be resubmitting. They went through one round of plan checks with our department, and they're going to be resubmitting soon. I've been keeping in touch with Tom Martinez, as well as the U-Haul team on that, and they're working on it right now.
Yeah, because, I mean, it's time. I don't know how else to put it. We've given them lots of time. We were very lenient, and they were a big controversial thing, and they're in, and we ask for certain things, and this, someone needs to remind them of their promises, and they just need to get that thing out.
Yeah, thank you. They definitely understand that. There's just that process to go through with the plan check, to do the exterior facade modifications, and we had some comments the first time around. So I'm expecting?
You're making it, you're making it better, thank you.
Right, they, I'm expecting to get that resubmit very soon.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Lopez, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to thank staff. The presentations are really top-notch. They've changed so much over the years, just the graphics, the way that our website's set up, that we can review split screen, or just an individual window for the presentation drawings. I just really commend Dana and staff, that you guys are doing a really good job. Thank you, guys.
It's nice, yeah, I agree entirely. That's great, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have something, Commissioner Hernandez? Did you have something, Commissioner Hernandez?
No, I agree, I agree with Commissioner Lopez. I really appreciate the tech, the techie side of things, and that it just makes it easier to access.
If I can also add, too, it's nice that we don't have binders and paper and, you know, a bunch of stuff like that. I think we're saving a lot of resources, so I think that's also really good. Thank you.
I liked the binders.
Oh, sorry, Tim.
No, I'm over it, I'm over it. I'm done, I'm done with the binders, I'm done.
Would you like your binder delivered, but just empty, just so you can have a binder?
I'm completely over it.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Thank you.
He's become a mole, he's become a mole.
Yeah. I know, I know how to use the split screen, too, Tom.
Dana, one other thing, any forward movement on traffic patterns, or anything regarding 166, 135, and all that?
Thank you, yes. So, and also, I have one other thing to talk about regarding ADUs that I forgot to mention. But, yeah, we've continued to coordinate with Caltrans. Right now, the focus is to try and implement that downtown specific plan, or the downtown streetscape plan, especially since we now have those projects that are moving forward in the downtown area to, you know, revitalize the downtown. And so I'm continuing to work with Caltrans on options, on what we can do. Also, I wanted to mention that we took the amendments to the accessory dwelling unit ordinance to the city council last night, and they went ahead and approved it. So that'll move forward now to a second reading in a few weeks. But I forgot to mention that the first time, so I wanted to let you all know about that.
And I can find that in the minutes from the meeting? Or where do I find that?
Yeah, it's on our city website. There's a meeting portal, and if you click on that, you can go to last night's city council meeting, and there's a link for it. I think it's, it was the only public hearing item that they had last night.
Thank you. And I think it was a 3-2, wasn't it?
Yes, it was.
All right, anything else?
I will not be up tomorrow's study session.
Okay, is anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I may not make it. I'm going to try, but I'm down.
Okay. All right, three stalwarts, that's excellent, okay. All right, if there is nothing else, I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting and thank you all. I appreciate it. It was nice seeing you after a month and a half.
It was.
Good job, Cody, I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, everybody, good seeing you.
Thank you all so much.
Thanks.
Good night.
Thank you.